Good evening. Can everybody hear me? I know I have a little strange voice tonight. So I'm gonna talk softly, but talk in the mic. Welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Evanston Township High School Board of Education. Could we have a roll call, please?
Paul Day.
Here.
Livingston.
Here.
Conzal.
Here.
Carson's.
Here.
Rollowis.
Here.
DeCaris.
Here.
Savage Williams.
Here. Thank you. So our first item is written communication. Dr. Davis?
We have no written communication this evening.
Okay, thank you. So we're already at information. And the first item is a report on the Oakton Community College Partnership.
And we're gonna invite Ann Brennan and our own Pete Davis and our own Pete Davis up to the table. And it's always really exciting to get an update on our relationship with Oakton and all that's going on. So Ann, great to have you here tonight.
Yep.
Lisa.
And then you can drive with the...
Lisa. I can drive. Okay, good. Again, I'm Ann Brennan from Oakton, and thanks for having me. Again, this is my second time that I'm getting to talk with you about the partnerships that are going on between Oakton and ETHS. I gave you each a folder, and in it you'll find my slide presentation. I'm glad to make it available to you afterward for you to share with anyone you'd like. And I want to tell you a little bit about Oakton as I start, and let's see if this does it. We are celebrating our 50th anniversary. And during that time, during the 50 years we have been there, we have graduated a half million students and 36,000... I'm sorry, we have enrolled a half million students, and 36,000 of those have been from Evanston. And 30,000 credentials have been awarded, of which 2,578 of them were for Evanston residents. Oakton employs 100 people who live in Evanston right now, and that didn't make it to the slide, but we do employ as well. We were named one of the top 50 best value colleges in the United States in 2019 by ValueColleges.com. You can look it up and find out their criteria, which include the return on investment after you graduate from a college. Our nursing program is ranked number five in Illinois for registered nurses. That's the Associate Degree in Nursing by the 2020 Nursing Process Organization. And last year, we received the Illinois Community College... It's the Illinois Community College Board Association Equity and Diversity Award for 2019. Again, diversity and equity. Equity is the theme for Oakton this year. We had a learning day where everybody in the school, we shut down the classes, pulled the faculty and staff in, and equity was our theme. Evanston Township High School was gracious enough to come that day and tell us about your work on equity. And we feel as though there are a lot of alignments about the goals that are happening here in Evanston and the goals that we have in Oakton. And I wanted to point out an alumni success story from both of our institutions. This is a shared graduate of Evanston Township and of Oakton who was talked about, and she is highlighted in the handout that I gave you in your present... in your folder. She graduated from Oakton, and I mean from Evanston. I have to say, I'm guessing at 11, and it's based on her story. Read her story. She did not have a straight line from where she is now to where she is now. She started in Evanston and is now a PhD candidate in Vanderbilt University. She went through a lot of obstacles to get to that point, and she becomes one of our favorite stories about the kinds of things that a college education can do for you, and that there isn't just one straight path to getting a college education, and you need to listen to other people's stories. We also, last year, awarded scholarships to your graduating seniors. We've been doing this every year. Last year, we saw an increase. You're gonna hear a lot about what we're trying to do to increase a lot of things about the interaction between our institutions. In 2018, three students got full tuition scholarships coming out of Evanston, and 2019, 25 did. We'll be looking for those students again. Those are full scholarships that pay for all of their tuition. Now let me tell a little bit about enrollments. You can see, and I talked about this again last year, and I'm sorry to say it hasn't stopped, but enrollments continue to decline in community colleges in the state of Illinois. This is a head count, the change from last year, what that represents in terms of full-time enrollment. And you can see back in 2001, and I think we're getting a lot of 10-year looks now. We're really looking as we head for the next decade of this century, looking 10 years back, 20 years back, and we see that Illinois has really fallen from having over 339,000 students going to community colleges to today when there are 271,000 students. That represented a 4% decline from last year. I'm gonna talk to you a little bit more about how that played out at Oakton. At Oakton, we saw a decline as well. We've been seeing the same decline over the same period of time, but we had predicted it would be worse. So we take our victories where we can see them in terms of trying to see, have we turned this ship around? And are we seeing students head for community college, our community college, at a higher rate? Remember, this is about a demographic decline. There are less people going to college now than there were when we started making those counts. We still see the Evanston residents in our population staying very much about 8% of our total population. That has been a long-term place that you've played. The number of students who were new students from, directly from ETHS to us last year was 79%. Again, around 8% of our new high school graduates. It just happens to be the same number, but it is 8% of our population from Evanston. This is another way of looking at our enrollment last year, and that's where we enroll our students or how we enroll our students. And it has stayed predominantly, 60% or so are taking their courses in person. But where we see increases are the online enrollments. We've seen that now two years in a row, not dramatic increases, but incrementally more and more students, even as we see enrollment declines, are continuing to choose to do online learning, sometimes along with their in-person learning and sometimes alone. Where we see the biggest change is people who are picking it up as one of their courses, as you can see on the bottom line of that slide. This is a five-year look at the yields from all of the high school districts at Oakton. And if you look in the very last row, you see 2019. We have been, again, seeing that about... If you look at the percentage of the whole on the outside, Evanston has held about a 9, 10, 11, a 10% increase. We're glad to see the number increase and the percentage increase. What we've been looking at is wanting to get students... This is literally, how many graduates did you have in your senior class and how many went to Oakton? We are aware that you have students who do not choose to go to college. This is a market that we're very interested in. We want to let you know what we've done this year. We started doing very deliberate activities to see the population in Evanston take more interest in considering Oakton. If they're not, if they don't have other choices in particular. We've... Last year, we had, we started having a representative here once a week. This year, we increased that time to coming here all day Monday. We had two different events this fall, a manufacturing day, and Evanston sent students out to come and spend the day at Oakton and learn at our Skokie campus about our manufacturing opportunities. And then you had many students come to us on a separate visit in November to come and learn about transfer... or about starting at Oakton and transferring or going on and getting your career after Oakton. We have had increased applicant communications through a process that we put into place this year that let all of our students apply in an easier online way with better communications on our side when we got that application. A big partnership that we have is our dual credit program. Our dual credit program, dual credit means that a student is taking an Oakton course at Evanston Township High School and getting credit for it at both Oakton and at Evanston Township High School. When the student graduates from Oakton, from Evanston, they have a transcript that is already started at Oakton, and that transcript is how they can take it to another college and get credit for it when they transfer. And you can see that this year, again, we've had an incredible increase in the number of students who are enrolled in dual credit. We had a 24% increase across our district. That includes 11 different high schools. These are the offerings that we have. The breakthrough on that, you'll have to get our catalog to read all of those titles, but CTE is the big dark part of the pie. Each of those represents a subject that we're teaching, accounting, automotive tech, basic nursing assistance, computer design, ECE is early childhood. Again, if you have questions about any of those titles, please ask me. I apologize for not listing them. They're just too long of a title. And you can see the declining percentage of what we called transition math as our state moves to transition math. And I'm gonna talk for a minute about transition math tonight and what we are working on with ETHS in terms of replacing that with the new statewide transition math course here at Evanston. At Evanston, your enrollments had a 52% increase. You had one of our largest increases. We, last year, had 258 students. This year, we have 394 students. In your folder, again, you have a description of all of the courses that we're teaching, and here's a list of the courses that we're teaching in your school this year. We see the big increases in the alignment of your Project Lead the Way and our dual credit courses, which will now get credit at Oakton and can move on through the Project Lead the Way and through dual credit. The future collaborations, we are, again, developing transitional math. I'll have a little bit to say about that in a minute. The business curriculum, we weren't exploring a barber school. I don't know if we are anymore. That's up... We're very open to it at Oakton. And we have conversations across the district about Oakton professors teaching online or onsite. We have that happening in at least one of our high schools. And we are definitely interested in aligning our courses and your courses to make sure that we can get any industry-recognized credentials awarded to your students before they graduate or as they graduate, or easily after they graduate. Transition math. I want to always say, how many in here have heard about transition math at the statewide level? So I'll just assume that you may have not heard anything. We, as a state, have decided that we will set up a course at the high school level, and it will be a collaboration between community colleges and high schools to establish three pathways into the three typical ways that you have to take mathematics when you're in college. So this chart represents to you those three typical ways, and it says in the middle there a guaranteed placement. The whole thing is, this isn't just between Oakton and Evanston Township. We're the group that's working together through a state panel that is going to approve statewide descriptions of courses, and they'll approve our versions of those. And when they are approved, they will get guaranteed placement at any community college in the state of Illinois. So that's the basic idea. We're taking what was developmental education math at the college level, and we're now gonna be teaching it at the high school level. We're trying to establish a situation whereby no student would graduate from a high school in the state of Illinois without the ability to be placed directly into college math through his high school coursework. And this course is not dual credit, just to make that clear. This is your course, an ETHS course, and every high school in our district will have a course. And when you look at a high school transcript in the future, and we will see them as soon as May 2020... So this May, some of the high schools across the state have already started to, I think about five, have had a course approved, that they got approved very early in the process. And they would be able to take that course to any one of us, and on their transcript, we would see a code, the high school transcript. And it would say, it's either in the first column, so they could be placed into college algebra, or the second column into the path that we think of as the general education quantitative analysis or statistical analysis track, or the third column, they're in a career and technical education pathway, and therefore there is an applied math that has been approved at the state level. So that's what we're working toward with your high school and the other high schools in our district. We all have had MOUs for a year now, and we've already... ETHS established a course. We have submitted it. We're working on the state to get it approved for this year. We've already said, if it takes longer for us to get this course approved, the course being taught at even at ETHS, we'll count it, Oakton, of course. It'll get the portability when the state panel gives it approval. So that's what I was gonna say about transition math. If you want to ask anymore, you can maybe question when I finish. And now let me talk a little bit about transfer. One of the things that I've done for a very long time is I worked with transfer. Before I went, before I came to Oakton, I spent a great many years in many colleges and universities, including 15 years at DePaul, seven years at the City Colleges of Chicago, and the School for the Art Institute locally, and a number of years out in California. So I know about this agreement that we have been in for a long time, the Illinois Articulation Initiative Agreement. It's a 30-year-old statewide agreement that says that we have a general education core curriculum built into our Associate of Arts and our Associate of Science degrees. So when your students come and pursue those college transfer degrees, you'll hear them called, everything transfers. We'll make sure of it. The program makes sure of it, and over 100 colleges in the state of Illinois accept it. And a lot of other states, Iowa, Arizona, Wisconsin, they're also making in our transfer agreements, we'll accept your general education core. So you don't have to worry about students transferring from us into other institutions and whether or not the coursework will go there. We've set up a number of partnerships with colleges all over the United States. What I've given you in your packet as well is a document that looks like this. On one side of the page is 47 colleges, and the other side of the second column is a number of partnerships next to a number of those colleges. That represents the top 47 colleges over a 10-year period that we have sent students to, that we have sent more than two students to on average. But we get into double digits at probably about number 30. Down and above 30, we're sending at least double-digit students to a year, every year for the past 10 years. The top five, we're sending hundreds, 100 or 200 students to every year for the past 10 years. And next to that, you'll notice that we have partnerships with most of the in-state colleges who are on the top of our list. So it's no mistake or no accident that we have a lot of students going to those colleges. We make partnerships with them. When you click into what will be our... This website will be published in January looking like this. We have a version of it right now that isn't filled with logos, making students hopefully want to click them. And when they click one of them in the future, it will open up the college page. And Lake Forest is a great example to show you. Lake Forest College, one of the elite premier colleges in the United States, right in our own backyard, has really gone transfer crazy, and they are very, very interested in transfer students. And they have a lot of opportunities for our students with full tuition scholarships into a lot of different programs. They're a delight to work with, and there are more and more colleges who are really carving out time to directly go after transfer students. If they click another partnership, they'll see a description like this one from the University of Illinois at Champaign-Urbana, the Engineering Pathways Program. And if they want to get a guaranteed admission into the engineering program at the University of Illinois at Champaign, they can start at Oakton and find a guaranteed path to get there. Another thing, another resource that they might find is a transfer pathway. We're gonna be working with Evanston to try and make really visible, easy-to-understand pathway-like connections between whatever starts here goes to us and then goes on to four-year colleges. That's a goal that we have that is really a five-year, I think, piece of work that we have to do with you. And it starts, it's in our catalog right now. The first two years at Oakton is spelled out. For instance, if you were in actuarial science at Oakton and you wanted to go on and get a degree in it when you transfer, it shows you what to take to get our degree, which is an Associate of Science degree with a prescribed collection of courses that would take you toward actuarial science. And then what would you take at Roosevelt when you were finished? I thought that I would end by trying to impress on you a fact about Illinois and that I think every board of education should know, and that is that we were ranked number one in the nation about having, after a student, after students transfer to four-year colleges, Illinois students gain bachelor's degree at the highest level in the United States. So if they transfer, and they will graduate with a bachelor's degree at 53%. And this is compared to, you'll hear about other states that are much better than us. Washington and Iowa are often brought up to others. Look for Ohio in this ranking. Look for Florida. These are states, have you heard, Tennessee has fabulous transfer programs, and we should be like these other states. You heard about the Illinois Articulation Initiative. For 30 years, we've been working together as a state to really help students transfer. I really feel that you have a great community college in this district, and you can count on it helping students transfer if that's their goals. And if they go to another college in Illinois, they probably won't do so bad either. So I wanted to make that point. Questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Ann. All right, questions from the board? Jude?
I mean, I'm just, I'm so pleased. There were a couple of board meetings ago, I asked a question about helping students to be college-ready, transitioning into Oakton, not having to take non-credit-bearing courses, which also there are, it impacts other areas of the student's life, like financial aid and, you know, there are a series of other. And I just really like what you all have done, the partnership, working on courses that can be taken here, like the pathway to college algebra and helping these youngsters to be college-ready, because also it impacts their sense of self-efficacy, so they feel like they're ready. And when they get to college, and I think that has a great impact as on whether or not, you know, how they do when they get to college. And I just, I remember asking this question two board meetings ago. I don't know if you remember, Pete, but thank you so much for the work that you all are doing. Just a comment and just a thank you.
Monique?
Yes. Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. So I have a couple of questions. The first question is, have, has Oakton ever considered partnering with HBCUs to create transfers to those schools that some of our students may be interested in?
You know, we have done outreach to HBCUs. We have done, for the past two years, we've done an HBCU fair. And they're receptive. One of the things that we have against us, I worked with the HBCU organization and had bigger success in Chicago. And it's about the, it's about the population and about the size of the population of black students at Oakton, I think. I think we need to collaborate with others in order to get a... They don't have great, no colleges these days has giant recruitment budgets. So when they come into a town like Chicago, they really do gather if there's more students in one place. So we're very interested in it. We kind of recognize the roadblocks that they have, and we certainly have hosted HBCU fairs for two years in a row. And the number of colleges that can afford to take time to come to the Oakton Fair, we try and do it around some big events that do happen in Chicago for the HBCU recruiters. But we really do outreach with them a lot.
Okay. Because I know a lot of our students are leaning towards that, and I know, well, probably because it's the state of California, they have a very good community school program with transfers to or partnership with HBCUs.
If you have any information about a program that we would, you know, benefit from looking into, we're open to it.
Yeah, I don't know how they do it, but again, it makes sense. You're talking about those schools needing more than just Oakton, right?
Yeah.
So they have to look at a city or a state in order to do that. But, okay. And my second question is about, so I was, it was good to see that 52, I think, percent, is that it?
Yes.
The student population from ETH has increased attending Oakton schools. So of course, I'm interested in those students, the same students that you are, the students that have not chosen to go on after they graduated from high school to get another degree. And I'm wondering what those barriers are and if transportation is still a barrier. So my, you know, my question is, if that is still a barrier and if your numbers are decreasing, right? How do we make sure that's not a barrier? And is there, are there conversations about coming closer to Evanston Township?
Well, this is perfect. As I left, I was talking to Ilya Lot, who's the Vice President for Academic Affairs, and I said, well, there's my, there's my presentation. I think I sort of buried the lead. Our board has asked us to begin exploration of establishing ourselves here in Evanston. So we have begun that in a very formal way. And in fact, Evanston has sent us some data about the students over the past couple of years who didn't choose a college as they left. We want to start to understand what were, what population is not choosing college and what might we have to offer them. We also think that in general, I mean, as we go, as we go into this, we believe that geography or location proximity has been the most obvious factor in students not coming to Oakton from Evanston. And so why shouldn't we be in Evanston? So our board is very interested in that. Five of our board members are from Evanston, are Evanston residents. So this is, this is now our beginning of our exploration, and I'm so glad you asked your question. That is specifically what we are doing. So I hope that you'll hear more the next time we come back about the results of those, of those questions and the collaborations that we'll be asking a lot of people in Evanston to help us find out about.
And I'll just mention, and Ann knows this, whenever we get a chance to talk to Dr. Smith, the president, or to any of their trustees, we're always putting in a good word for opening a branch campus in Evanston. So that would be a monumental thing to happen, and appreciate the fact that there's a lot of openness to thinking about that now.
Great.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Gotcha.
Hi, thanks for coming. I think that I raised this last year, and so I'm gonna raise it again this year because I wasn't seeing the information that I, that I was hoping I might see in the presentation. And that is, while it's terrific that we're focusing on getting more kids to consider Oakton as an alternative post-graduation from ETHS, I'm interested in knowing how the kids from ETHS who do choose to go to Oakton do once they get there. So in other words, it's great that you showed an overall figure of transfer data for the state of, entire state of Illinois, not even specific to Oakton, as being, you know, generally higher than other states in the country. Although my question would be, what's that number for Oakton? And then even more specific and more relevant to the board members sitting around this table is how are, how do our kids do? How many are graduating from Oakton? And I know that's gonna be a smaller number because in many cases they are transferring. But then there's also a chunk who just struggle because they can't get off the ground. And unlike our one, you know, this terrific story here who had setbacks and did stop after one semester but came back. For every one of her, there's a bunch of others who don't get there. So I'm really interested in that information, and I think it would make for a more relevant presentation for this board, maybe again when you come back next year. I was hoping to see it tonight. And the reason, I want you to understand, I think, why that's important for us as a board, because my concern is not necessarily the same concern as yours. My concern is about ETHS kids and how they are prepared and succeed in life. And that may mean that our kids are going to four-year colleges, apprenticeships, to the military, working. I don't necessarily think it's a bad thing if your enrollment is up or down at Oakton, because if our kids are making choices to go somewhere that's a good choice for them, that's fine. And it may or may not impact your enrollment, so...
Oh, I understand. So anyway, sorry. I actually, we gave the student profile for Evanston to Evanston, and I just didn't bring it with us tonight. We've produced one, and I'll make sure that the board gets that.
That'd be great.
It talks about the persistence and retention and... It talks about the persistence and retention and, and-
I think that's the key information for us.
Yeah, and we definitely share that with Evanston. I should've brought it to the board here as well.
Okay.
And, um, I, I will send it separately and ask you to, to give it to the board.
Great, thanks.
Sure.
That will be good to see.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions? Well, thank you so much for coming-
Thank you.
And thank you for your presentation.
Sure.
And I look forward to getting that other-
I will make sure you get it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So, our next, um, item is the report on Student Services and Student Well-being. And I see Dr. Campbell and-
Taya.
Taya, yes. Yeah, Taya Kinsey, yes.
All right.
Good evening.
My name is Taya Kinsey, um, and I am the Associate Principal for Student Services. And Dr. Campbell and I, um, are very pleased to be able to be here to present to you all regarding Goal Two around well-being, knowing that in part, this is about what we're doing within Student Services and in large part, it's about what we are doing as an entire school family to support Goal Two well-being. And as we're joking about well-being, not unlike our board president, I have a little bit of something, so you'll hear me clear my throat on occasion.
I'll toss you a cough drop if you-
Thank you. Um, we really are focused on the message that we have been really communicating throughout the year, starting with Dr. Campbell and Dr. Witherspoon, around the fact that belonging matters and that it's together that we all support WildKit well-being. Um, and as we noted here, we really believe in the message that you belong here. And that's to our students, but that's to every person who's part of our school family. As we're looking at, um, part of our school family, Dr. Witherspoon said this recently and, um, Dr. Campbell and I agree, that when, Dr. Witherspoon said, "Relationships are a prerequisite to learning," we, we couldn't capture it better than that and the research actually agrees with every component of that. We know that not only does belonging matter, but it impacts our academic learning, it impacts our social-emotional learning, and it is without a doubt central to our work around equity. And as it is reflected in our Five Essentials data, we see that our students feel and agree with this experience. Ninety-four percent of our students noting that they feel safe and comfortable at our school. Ninety-two percent of our students feeling treated with respect, one of the central core components for anyone, no matter their age, but particularly for adolescents, the importance of feeling respected. Ninety-two percent of our students report that people at ETHS are friendly. And, um, we're glad to know all those things, particularly because as we're gonna go through this, um, presentation tonight, we are going to have moments of, of mindfulness. Um, and mindfulness, we know, has become very, um, trending. But we also know that mindfulness not only supports social-emotional learning, not only does it support academic learning, it actually supports your physical well-being as well. And the way that we're gonna infuse that is again, by bringing it back to, who are we talking about tonight? We're talking about our students. And so, we're gonna pause on photos throughout the presentation and much like, um, Oakton report indicated, each of us has stories to tell and we really try hard to listen when our students talk about their stories, about their strengths, about their challenges, about their hopes, and about what we can do to help further each of those. So, we want to celebrate what has gone thus far and that belonging matters.
One of the ways we see belonging take hold is through attendance and, um, you can see that our students are here every day, um, often long before AM support starts and well after ninth period ends, students are here, um, and, um, taking advantage of the fact that they do feel safe and that they do belong here in our hallways. Uh, we support this through our climate programs and infusing modeling of social-emotional learning throughout our instruction. Measuring well-being can be one of the most difficult things to do, um, and, but one of the ways we try to do it is to see, do the kids come to school every day? And we see that here that they do. And yet, we are committed to, uh, increase a sense of belonging, um, as with some students who struggle with attendance or students who actually come to school every single day but don't make it to class. Uh, looking at all four years of the Class of 2019, we see the mean attendance rate was ninety-three percent for all and work actively to address the lower attendance for some subgroups, including students with IEPs, Black and Latinx students. For instance, as we work on this, eighty-seven percent of our Black males had fewer than nine days of absences, which was a targeted goal, um, set out by the administration and the staff to make sure that we work on attendance for, for Black males.
So, our next slide is with regard to chronic absenteeism. And chronic absenteeism is not something we typically report on, um, as it does not directly reflect our outcome measure. Yet, there have been shifts in, um, our state requirements for reporting, so we felt that that merited a discussion and wanted to speak to, what does chronic absenteeism mean and how is it relevant to ETHS? Chronic absenteeism does not reflect who, reflects students who are not engaged in learning or post-high school planning. But what it does is, um, it defines essentially missing ten percent or more of the academic year, including both excused and unexcused absences. So, it reflects, again, excused and unexcused absences and that includes things such as field trips, curricular-based activities that require different codes for attendance. And we thought that this was particularly important, given that while we know that our chronic absenteeism rate is above that of the state at this time, we know that it's a twenty-four percent versus the state at eighteen percent. This doesn't surprise us and here's why. Um, the good news is that we have a tremendous number of students engaging in experiential learning opportunities outside of the classroom environment. And in fact, we had two-hundred-and-forty-three field trips to enhance learning and that were an extension of the classroom for enhanced-on opportunity.
Say that again.
Two-hundred-and-forty-three field trips last year. Not because they're getting out of the classroom, it's because it engages learning when we are hands-on. And so, we're really excited about that fact. And at, chronic absenteeism actually includes all of those components. Um, it also includes when students are doing research and planning and going to Northwestern University or other local, um, post-secondary institutions. Oakton, going to Northeastern, all of our partnerships, that includes those components. It also includes post-high school planning. And our post-high school planning, traditionally, many people may have thought, "Oh, that's just college visits." And that has ended. And we're excited about the fact that that includes going to future job sites, that includes internships, going to technical programs, um, and career programs, as well as going to college campuses. So, we wanted to contextualize that for everyone on the board, um, to understand that further. This also includes students who may have excused absences that are related to absences around hospitalizations, around medical needs, um, around homebound tutoring. And so, we wanted to make sure also to include that it also addresses student needs that are excused absences and that we're supporting active learning occurring in those ways as well. In fact, um, last year, our homebound tutoring continued to rise, so we're continuing to respond to needs when they arise. Um, that rose to seventy-three students last year, twelve of whom were Black males. Again, with the intention of making sure that we are meeting the needs of all of our students, reflective of where they're functioning and what their need is. Thirty-three of our, our homebound tutoring were for medical needs, twenty were, twenty-one were from special education, and nineteen were related to psychiatric needs. So, providing some context for our chronic absenteeism. Our next slide is specifically looking at chronic truancy. And for, again, to provide some context, chronic truancy is defined as the percentage of students who miss five percent or more of school days per year without a valid excuse. So, those are unexcused. The good news here is that we were actually ahead of the state many years ago when we made a commitment to hold on to our students with interventions. There have been many state mandates that have come out in the last few years, particularly around obligations for schools to establish more and more interventions to support our truant students. ETHS has led the way absolutely on that. Our truancy officer, as you can see, we noted, our truancy officer alone took eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven steps related to truancy and interventions. So, um, what we affectionately now refer to as hallway office hours, because we have many students who feel a sense of belonging within a school but may not feel connected to a classroom. So, our truancy officer is now engaging in hallway office hours to talk with students, to connect with them. They, um, develop great relationships with him as well and to figure out how to connect them to, back to that classroom environment, um, ultimately, to create the sense of belonging, not just to the school, but into each classroom. Um, specifically also, there are many ways that our grade-level teams are working and teachers are working to think about, what are our early identification systems, our truancy meetings and plans, mental health services? We have groups specific to truancy, um, and looking at community resources, we are doing more home visits now than ever before, both to address school refusal, because that's another piece of chronic truancy. In the past, folks tended to think of chronic truancy as students who didn't care and just didn't show up. What we know is many students who are demonstrated in what we have to define as chronic truance are actually school refusal and are struggling around anxiety and are struggling around, "How do I cope and make it into the school?" And we're continuing to support them. The other piece that we're, um, continuing to be excited about is, um, five years ago, we really made a commitment to shift from focusing on purely truancy and dropping students after a certain number of absences to really holding on to our students with as many interventions as it takes to help them get through. And as a result, our four-year graduation rate has increased to ninety-two percent and our five-year graduation rate has increased to ninety-four percent. And we knew that while our chronic truancy rate has not gone down, it has gone up because we are so committed to holding on to our students and persevering with them, not just, um, dropping them. The other thing we wanted to note, um, was the fact that, um, as a result, we have of varied interventions. We're gonna talk more about our alt-school report tonight. Forty-two graduates last school year had participated at some point in time in the alt-school and a total of, in the last over five and a half years, a hundred-and-sixty students have graduated as a result of alt-school as an intervention. So, we're excited about all the interventions that are in place.
You've got a little bit of information of students who participated in extracurricular activities, um, from Nicole Boyd and from Chris Lovatino. And, uh, that also is something that Student Services is looking to monitor. And, um, at that meeting, we talked a little bit about the shortcomings of how we look at and capture that data. So, in response to that, um, what you will see next year is a more comprehensive view of what involvement looks like, what it entails, that is outside of what we can capture in a club or an activity. So, that's just to note that. So, we continue to connect to students, uh, school-wide and new individualized supports through early identification and as that is, we actually look and talk about individual students and if they're involved in something. And, uh, we problem-solve and, uh, to make sure that students can be involved in a, in some sort of activity. Um, we identify traditional and non, uh, non-traditional extracurricular programming and we continue to define like new opportunities and new ways to serve students, um, who are participating in activities and, um, as, and to create a sense of belonging and connectedness. Uh, we assist with re-engagement with academics through school life, through the arts and sports and various clubs and activities and you'll hear more about it through the summits and so many other things. Uh, but that's also a means to which we, um, use activities as an intervention to get students re-engaged, uh, in school. And some of the ways we're already doing this is through our also co-curricular activities such as WildKit Ensemble, our WildKit Therapeutic Theater Workshop, uh, Group WTTW, Best Buddies. All of these things won't be captured here, but we will be sure to engage in, um, the methods next year to make sure that we are, we are, that our efforts around including every kid in an activity can be reflected in the data. So, um, this is, um, one of our mindful moments and we just want to pause and to reflect on the photos, as Taya mentioned. Okay. You've also seen a, a little bit of the, you've seen the data on our discipline and, um, behavior referral outcomes. And at ETHS, we are preparing students to live, uh, in the world through growth opportunities. When a student makes a mistake, we give them opportunities to learn and correct their mistakes and we document disciplinary referrals so that behaviors can be addressed from a teaching and learning definition and not simply from a punitive one. And I just want to reiterate, just because we're talking about discipline doesn't mean we're talking about consequences. We're, we're also, uh, talking about learning opportunities for, for students. While we want to help students build good decision-making skills, when a student makes a mistake, we want to help them to consider the impact of their actions, uh, and demonstrate empathy and be consistent with the bester of practices and identify how they, uh, can engage or redo different actions in the future. Our students made progress toward this outcome measure for behavior referrals and not suspensions. While every, uh, while a very small number of students demonstrate significantly more complicated and higher needs, we see that eighty-three percent, if you've seen this data before, eighty-three percent of our students earned zero, one, or zero behavior referrals, which is up from seventy-nine percent in the seventeen-eighteen school year. And eighty-one percent of students did not earn a behavior referral, which is up from eighty-three percent in seventeen-eighteen. Uh, one percent of all ETHS students earned, uh, over thirty-eight percent of all behavior referrals. Seven percent of the students, of fifty students who earned behavior referrals account for thirty-eight of the total behavior referrals. And fifty-nine percent of all Black males did not earn a behavior referrals. And so, essentially what that says is we know that we have, continue to have work to do with the population of students who are accumulating the highest number of behavior referrals. And we talked about that at our, at, at the board meeting where we discussed disciplinary referrals, that we're looking for newer, uh, not newer, but different ways, uh, to intervene with students to address, um, the recidivism that we see in the dean's office for that population of kids.
Mm-hmm. And we recognize that for some subgroups, that means our own persistence, we ask kids to persist and we are working on persisting with students and continuing to also create other ideas for interventions and having student voice within that context as well when we think about some of the subgroups that we know, for example, our IEP students and, um, our Black students. When we see numbers that are lower, we're paying attention to that and recognizing there's a need that we're not going to stop addressing because we need to help all students. Okay. Looks like some pieces. So, um, this is my, my component to talk a little bit about GPA outcome measure. Um, as the board is likely aware, um, we are always working to think about, how do we quantify outcome measures for Goal Two in a way that really is relevant to well-being? And we're also committed to further analysis to determine even better ways to define maintaining or increasing GPA with respect to well-being. We do know GPA is a great way to measure instruction and academic learning as well as progress monitoring. However, historically, we've really struggled to capture the measurement of well-being within the outcome of GPA. And so, we are looking at all of this. We're looking at growth with regard to GPA, but we're also recognizing that from a well-being perspective, some students have straight A's yet struggle with social-emotional components. Some students have straight A's but do not struggle. Similarly, some students have a lower GPA and struggle with their social-emotional functioning and some students with lower GPA do not. So, we recognize that it's complicated, but that's one of the reasons we are committed to thinking about well-being for all students. You can see from, um, the achievement report that Dr. Levy shared, um, last month about our Class of 2019 cohort, that, um, the cat, the class continued to grow to a mean GPA- We're looking at growth with regard to GPA, but we're also recognizing that from a well-being perspective, some students have straight A's yet struggle with social-emotional components. Some students have straight A's but do not struggle. Similarly, some students have a lower GPA and struggle with their social-emotional functioning. And some students with lower GPA do not. So we recognize that it's complicated, but that's one of the reasons we are committed to thinking about well-being for all students. You can see from the achievement report that Dr. Levy shared last month about our class of 2019 cohort, that the class continued to grow to a mean GPA of three-point-oh-six, which was consistent with the growth from past outcomes of previous cohorts. And it's also reflective of the growth of GPA to other relative subgroups, including black males at a two-point-three, Latinx males specifically at two-point-six, and looking at our free and reduced price lunch students at two-point-five, as well as students with IEPs at two-point-four. We recognize we want to continue to support all students with their social-emotional learning. We're pleased to see some of the growth around fifty-eight, six, sorry, percent of our black males earning a cumulative unweighted GPA of two-point-five and that ninety-three percent of our freshman black males last year earned twelve credits or more. We're very pleased about that and we're also committed to supporting all of our students as we look forward, both around social-emotional learning and around the academic supports. And as we noted, just a few of them, everything from classroom interventions to putting in more formal supports with AIT or programmatic supports with Stay and Avid, as well as our early interventions. Our executive functioning, a blend of all, both academic and the social-emotional components, we've expanded this year to include within FAS, to include within Wild Kit Academy, and to include both before and after school. So we continue to figure out, how do we grow these supports to help students grow with their GPA?
Just pause for another, pause for another moment to focus on a mindful moment, which are students and families.
We recognize someone, a few people. Warmer days, I think, are listed up here, too. And as we look, we look at moving forward and thinking about student needs as well as connecting students to resources, we have reflected on our well-being survey from March of 2019. And we wanted to share a few things. One of them is that we definitely see that students experience stressors and anxiety and students are also actively accessing mental health supports from ETHS and from their families and our community. Anxiety and stress are normal and actually, a little bit of stress can keep us on our toes. That's maybe why I haven't screwed up too much tonight, because presenting can be stressful, too. And when stressors and anxiety and depressive symptoms become too much, we really want to, we are obligated as a school, as well as a community and all of our families, to continue to help our students learn to cope with the stressors that happen in life and when it feels too much. The good news is that while thirty-seven percent of our students with anxiety, experience anxiety or stress and impacted daily activities for six or more days in the thirty days prior to the survey being given, and twenty-six-point-two percent of the students reported that they felt sad or hopeless most days for two weeks or more that resulted in stopping some usual activities. While that is very true, the good news is, what our students were reporting is that they seek out support. And they've reported that they seek out support from ETHS staff, from parents and guardians and other adult family members, to hotlines, to hospitals, and to mental health professionals, including our ETHS mental health professionals and mental health professionals in the community. So while there is significant need, our students are reaching out. And so we saw that in the report, that fifty-five percent of our students sought out a mental health professional in the last year. And seventeen percent of those students, seventeen percent of all students, one in six students reported seeing an ETHS mental health professional in the last year. That's tremendous. Thirty-eight percent of our students, more than one in three, reported seeing a mental health professional in our community. So we really wanted to pause to recognize that we are so grateful to live in a community that supports mental health the way we do from community providers and our gratitude extends to being here at a school that supports mental health and values well-being in such a way that we show our commitment with the number of mental health staff who are able and willing at any moment to support. When we're looking additionally at the other ways that needs are being demonstrated, one in eight students were referred for social work services last year, a number that continues to grow, as you can see from the chart. Our access of scans to a variety of our services that support well-being, from our health services office, which is our nurse's office, our social work office, and our counseling office, all of those scans reflect our student enrollment by race again. It's also important for us to note that one hundred and seventy-five suicide risk assessments were completed by ETHS mental health professionals last year. That was just here in the building. And another step that we took actively, in addition to the over fifty mental health groups with service provision that were provided last year, was the fact that we created a new role last year, which is our Student Services Intervention Coordinator, which was really intended to streamline and collaborate and coordinate teams around the many interventions that are taking place, intended for a dual purpose, to create all those coordination of services and to free up our social workers, who are the primary mental health providers, to spend more time doing direct service around mental health and less time on the coordination of paperwork. So we were excited to have been providing that opportunity as well. Again, going back to needs and connecting of resources, it's pretty tremendous that we had eleven thousand and two hundred visits to our health services team and that even within our health services team, we saw an increase, twenty-four percent to six hundred and eighty students who had health plans. That means a health condition that needed to be monitored, individual health plans, and medical 504 plans. And that was up significantly from five hundred and fifty the year before. So we're seeing an increase in physical health needs as well. Eight hundred and nine PE limitations. And it is notable that our health services staff get a lot of exercise. Two hundred and seven times, they were called out of the health services office to respond to an emergency within the building. So we know that medical emergencies are increasing as well. The health services office also experiences the needs around psychiatric or social-emotional issues because we saw a seventeen percent increase to student visits in the health services office around these components. And then when we're looking about the students who've been psychiatrically hospitalized, you can see that one hundred students were psychiatrically hospitalized last year. And while that is an increase in the number, what we saw was a decrease in the number of repeat hospitalizations. So we're glad that we have the supports in place. Another increase that we saw in terms of reflection of both student need and providing services is an increase to four hundred and three individual 504 plans. While all of these situations are intense and they reflect meeting needs, another way that we've been meeting needs around anxiety and making sure that we keep focused on equity has to do with our graduating seniors and thinking about post-high school planning. We're happy to see that students experience their counselor meetings. Ninety-four-point-two percent experienced the counselor meetings as helpful. And while we're really happy that eighty-nine-point-four of our graduating seniors felt prepared for high school, we are focused on the ten-point-six, who we are going to continue to commit to. And specifically, we talked a lot with students who weren't feeling secure about post-high school planning and were struggling just making it day-to-day-to-day around their academics. So we worked with Oakden, we worked with Youth Job Center, we worked with the Mayor's Employment Advisory Council, and we worked with our counselors around identifying new transition, new supports, everything from different workshops to individual daily case management. We, new transition workshops included, what if I don't go to college? Post-high school life skills. Several of us actually in this room have had conversations of what do post-high school life skills really look like? Because those life skills are critical, both for success in college, in any career or any skill opportunity. We also wanted to note that in the partnership with Oakden Community College and Will U Job Center, we partnered up with them at the end of the school year to ensure that the students who had identified that they did not feel like they had, they were pleased with getting to graduation but struggled at times to get to graduation and did not have a secure plan, we partnered with Youth Job Center, Oakden Community College, and the Students Agreement to ensure that there would be follow-through in that same level of case management that we provided would be provided after high school. So we were excited about that. And a link that we don't have time to look through with you all, but for you to take a look at, is our Career Pathways Programs of Study is updated with our community partners as we've all worked strongly for that. So, thank you. So when we talked about new things we were doing last year, in addition to the well-being survey, we implemented our first-ever signs of suicide program with all freshmen. And that included both curriculum as well as screenings. And we wanted to share a little bit about the outcome. As you can see, nine hundred and sixty freshmen participated. We did have that opt-out opportunity as well. And twenty-three percent of our students were identified as needing follow-up. And of those students, one hundred and forty-nine were referred for services. The even better news, in addition to referring any student for services, is that fifty-four percent of the students who we referred were first-time referrals. So we learned about new students as a result. And we really believe in that early intervention because now is that time. Similarly, we wanted to speak a little bit to Acknowledge Care Tell, which is our ongoing message to empower all members, every single person in this room and in our school community, to make sure that we act, to acknowledge when there's a concern about well-being, to care and message that to the student, and to tell someone and to take that action. So wanted to share a little bit about the fact that we were, we've been talking a lot about Acknowledge Care Tell works. In the last two weeks alone, off-hours, we have had six different Acknowledge Care Tell situations where either students directly shared with their parents, with coaches, with teachers, and as a result, action was taken for direct intervention out of school hours to prevent anyone from being in harm's way and from self-harm. So we're really grateful to our whole community for embracing Acknowledge Care Tell and the way our, our coaches, our sponsors, our teachers, our students, our whole school community bends over backwards to make sure this happens, even off-school hours and on weekends.
Just a few more mindful moments as we reflect on well-being. You see at the top is our monthly Student of the Month Breakfast, which we instituted about ten years ago, which we continue to do to acknowledge students and all of the great work that they're doing outside of the classroom that doesn't always show up on a great report. This is a few of our staff. Our staff, as Taya mentioned, go above and beyond to create a sense of connectedness and well-being for students. I actually thanked the staff at an all-staff meeting in September because there was a student, both Dr. Witherspoon and I and a few other administrators and staffers just out and about before first period during AM support, and we noticed that it was a student who likes to sit on the floor with his head down in the H-Hall. And I think I learned fairly quickly that this is just what the student prefers to do. But one particular morning, as I stood in front of the main office, at least five adults who did not know that student reached out to touch and to connect with that student to make sure that everything was okay. And I noted that and I thanked the entire staff at the first all-staff meeting that we had because it's something that Dr. Witherspoon and I have been saying, and Taya and many others have been saying over and over again, and they got it. And they go, as I said, go above and beyond to make sure that our students are feeling connected and are feeling okay. And I know for a fact that these staff members who were concerned about this student sitting on the floor did not know this student. They were just trying to lend a helping hand and checking in. There's one more, a couple more. You may recognize a few faces up there. So Aristotle says that knowing yourself is the beginning of all wisdom. And we are working towards self-awareness as we work on being fearless about focusing on equity in social-emotional and academic learning. Which in other words, we're focusing on how do we change our practice and reflect on ourselves as we engage in supporting our kids. One of the ways we're doing that is through our MTSS, Multi-Tier Systems of Support group that focuses on equity prevention, equity prevention efforts with all students and the use of strategies to help students develop socially-emotionally and academically. We also are engaging in attacks. Last year, we decided to do a book study on culturally relevant teaching and the brain by Zaretta Hammond. You see a picture of that. And it's really a book that focuses on SEL practices for each staff member to apply in their role as educators, from secretaries to teachers and administrators. And it's a book that really encourages teachers and staff to reflect on themselves and their culture and their interactions and engagement with students. We also have our all-staff meetings where we engage in training videos, team department meetings, lunch sessions for suicide prevention, child abuse, inappropriate touch, substance use, LGBTQ plus youth, including student-made staff professional development video, which we will share the link for that, bullying and harassment, sexual harassment, sexual assault, CPR, AED, first aid training and overnight trip planning. These are all of the things that we rehearse each year so that our students and staff are not in harm's way and that we're getting the information that we need to support students. We're working on how to continue to infuse SEL and equity in all spaces in the school. And we recognize that social-emotional competencies can be grown in adults and modeled by staff when their well-being is also intact, which is why we do a number of Staff Appreciation Week activities and have provided massage appointments for staff and do a number of things to help staff relax. And, you know, we, as I said, we mentioned a few weeks ago that we have a meditation studio and we are constantly thinking of new ways to get staff to decompress so that they can be their best selves for our students. And as department, as teams, as individuals as a whole, we are focused on how to support well-being through our commitment to equity and social-emotional academic learning, addressing the complicated needs and celebrating the strengths of our students each and every day through all of these programs that we have on the screen there.
Finally, we want to move to student agency as we think about the fact that together we support Wild Kit well-being. And we believe that student voice helps us learn and grow in the same way that we hope to help them learn and grow. And that really is seen in everything from our student summits to sexual assault awareness and prevention planning, all these year-long activities, mental health awareness activities, our online incident reporting form, which is a new form, and I know you read about in the report. It's our new vehicle to providing an online capacity to report bullying, harassment, intimidation, concerning or threatening behavior, hate incidents, retaliation, unwanted or inappropriate touch, and sexual harassment or sexual assault. Students strongly participate in those components and we look forward to students giving great feedback and planning for Wild Kit Futures Day next year as well. We also have linked here, and in the interest of not keeping you here until midnight, we will restrain ourselves from showing this video at this time. But we really, because it's linked here, we really encourage you to watch what was a professional, it was designed as a professional development video specifically for our staff. And that is around how we can best support our gender diverse students. And they did a tremendous job. I think William Jenkins, who's in the back here, working some magic with Chris May, and I, me being less of the techie than William, supported this effort. And in the end, we all went, wow, that really doesn't need anything except for our links for additional support and tools. So it's just another show of how amazing our students are. Lastly, we do want to just say thank you. We know that, we believe that belonging matters and we want each student to remember that, in the words of Dr. Witherspoon, never forget that you belong here at ETHS. in the words of Dr. Witherspoon, "Never forget that you belong here at ETHS, each and every one of you." We ground ourselves in this conviction and that the well-being of our students belongs to each of us, that it is directly related to every member of our school family in everything we say and everything we do. So, thank you.
Very powerful. Questions from the board? Echo.
Relating to the discipline referrals with IEP specifically, so thirty-nine percent of IEP students receive a referral, what are the strategies for decreasing that number?
So, ideally, prevention comes first. So, considering, what is the opportunity that we have for social-emotional learning within the context of both general education and special education classes? So, focusing even more from a school-wide perspective for all students about how do we make sure that we're providing new skill-building opportunities in the classroom as well? And that's part of that infusing social-emotional learning as we look at moving forward because that is what research has shown is most effective with adolescents, is infusing that into the classroom setting as opposed to programs, SEL programs, that tend to be more effective with a K through eight from a research perspective. And so, that also reflects on our, our experiences around climate, that feeling of being respected as, as students feel more respected, they begin to demonstrate the behavior that indicates that level of respect. It also is reflected in our work around equity. But as we intensify and we look more carefully specifically at students with IEPs, we have students with social work minutes, and we've actively worked to ensure that students who are receiving referrals, that again, we see that not as a negative, but as a positive from a teaching and learning perspective, and that we're looking at that from the perspective of how have we, how are we moving forward in making sure that we have the groups in place and that we have the individual social work minutes in place per an IEP as well? So, we've really been looking at that. I will say that one of the things we've really seen as a reflection of this teaming perspective is that our deans and our social workers work very intensely together and can often, you know, finish the, what's the plan with this student? What's happening with a behavior intervention plan as we continue to look at? What are our functional behavioral analyses? What are our behavior intervention plans? So, we are committed to continuing to grow that.
And just because a student gets, be there with an IEP or without an IEP, gets a referral doesn't necessarily mean that they're getting some sort of consequence. It's simply a documentation of how we move to support the student moving forward.
I'd like to, I'd like to also add, I think, you know, we often talk about restorative practices, and that is critical for all of our students, including for our IEP students. And again, just like Dr. Campbell said, when you get a referral, it does mean a conversation with the dean. And what we are seeing, and it's actually one of the reasons that last year at the Bromley Awards within special education, Dean Shanahan was our staff member who was honored within the context. So, it just shows you the extent to which our deans are seen as problem solvers and as go-to people for our students with IEPs and without IEPs. So, we don't need a reason for a discipline referral, rather to see the deans as interventious and engaging that way.
And it also doesn't mean we're not having serious conversations with teachers about the number of referrals that they write. So, that's just for the sake of the conversation.
Well, thank you for this report. I have to tell you, I love this report because it wasn't really that long ago that there was a really bright line between academics and people. And I heard many arguments in my day about that didn't matter, it's all about getting, you know, to standards and all that. Not that those, not that there's anything wrong with that, right? But it's so, the way you've integrated this and the way it's grown, just in, in my time on the board, I mean, there's just, it's so diverse in terms of the kinds of things you're doing and the depth. I love that you know that a hundred and six kids didn't have a post-high school plan because then you know their names, and then you can go find them and help them. And I, I just think that's so important, and that's the kind of work that, I know I've talked to Marcus about this probably at nauseam, but that's the kind of thing I think that really is going to change significantly individual lives as well as our, our school and our ability to truly ensure equity. So, just fabulous work. I do want to know, and I think I asked this question last year, but you're doing so much great stuff, you're being very creative about how it gets done in terms of making sure everyone knows and is a part of the team, but do you have enough people to do all this? And what, you know, what does that look like? I mean, in all seriousness, because that's part of where we come in, right, is budgets and, and things. And I just want to make sure that, I know you're doing a fabulous job, but this is a lot. So, can you speak to the staffing a little bit?
So, I, I do want to speak to, first to answer your question, we are really grateful that, we know we work in a community, most schools not, most school communities do not have the external community that has a level of support that we have with regard to mental health and service provision. And we know we're fortunate to be in a school community that, that not just says that we support mental health or says that we support equity, but we actually follow through on that. So, we, we are very grateful. And we are constantly looking at how, how are we providing services? You know, we had the Weatherbell Forum just last week and was having a conversation with some students around mental health and accessing social work, and some students having these, you know, easy-access experiences, and other students giving even different ideas. So, we're going to constantly continue to look to our students, right, to some of this guidance and the student voice, as well as think outside the box of what other structures for our internal capacity do we want to create? And, and we were literally having a conversation about this this morning with our social workers and our psychologists.
And we added a position last year, an interventionist that did two things, and Taya mentioned this in her report. As a part of the MTSS team, this person is really helping us to connect students to interventions, working with the grade-level team and doing all of that so that the social workers and our other mental health professionals, including their interns, have more direct service provision with students. So, it's a lot, and we can always find the need to do, to, to do more, but we know that, that there are considerations around budgets and things like that. But we do, we are doing and making the investments where we need to make them.
That's great.
I do want to emphasize that one of the ways we grow capacity is we no longer think that these issues are only addressed by student services personnel. That's the old model, that, you know, student has need, you send them to the counselor, or has a need, you send them to the social worker. Now, it becomes part of, of the responsibility of everybody in the school, all of the faculty, but all of the support staff. And, and we see that in, in, in a lot of our support staff members, Safety, who interacts a lot with students, would be a good example. But our deans, our administrators, Dr. Campbell, myself, I mean, you, you, you need to think of it differently. We have maybe never enough people, but we have enough people in the sense that it becomes the responsibility of all the adults in the building, not simply some people with, with a particular job title. And once you create that kind of culture, it, it, even how students are able to reach out and how they know that there are adults they can go to and, and how referrals generate. And thank you for, in the old model, a referral was something bad. In the old model, if you got a referral, you're probably in trouble. That's not what a referral is anymore. A referral is, here is a student that we identify who, who could use extra help, extra support, you know, something needs to be addressed, and then we mobilize around that. So, I just want to emphasize, when you talk about how the model has changed, the model has really changed, and it's a very different model than the old-school model. And so, as a result, everybody has a part in this.
No, that, I think that's great, and I, again, I think that's the systemic piece that allows this really to work because it's not just ten people in the social work office, but it's a lot of other people. I had one really specific question. What is democratic classroom? Sounded interesting, so I wanted to know what that was.
I guess that's me.
Oh, okay. I don't need an hour, just like a quick. Or you can give me a link, and I'll read later.
We, we love democratic classroom.
The democratic classroom is, I think, an amazing way, actually, that, that both social-emotional learning and academic learning are very much interwoven as well as student agency and power. So, we wanted to note that as kind of a structure that supports, I think Dr. Campbell's eager to talk a little bit more about it. But just as an example, we've had a number of student, of staff who have gone through the training around democratic classrooms, and that's in all content areas. So, everything from math to English to special education, so all of these content areas to really look at, what is the structure of the classroom? What's the role of the student? Where does collaboration, and it's exactly what, what it implies of where is the democracy within the classroom environment, and how do students learn from that with taking on different roles in a classroom? And it also embraces what naturally lends itself to social-emotional learning, including around, how do you engage in a redo? How, where does a restorative justice, without needing to name it as restorative justice, take place in a democratic classroom? So, teachers have been really excited to share those examples, including students, teachers, sorry, who are not engaged in the democratic classroom itself, talk a lot about the experiences they're having by infusing, just by what they're doing, whether it's a journaling moment or a meditation moment, the ways that they're infusing it naturally.
And there's a lot of student agency in these models. For example, students decide when they're going to take assessments, what those assessments are going to look like, and as Taya mentioned, what are the opportunities for redos? Everybody in the class has a class job, and it really lends itself to the excellent portion of the Danielson Framework for our evaluation system because students are doing a bulk of the work. They're doing the, setting expectations for each other, developing class norms and rules, and determining everything about their learning within the classroom. It's remarkable to see.
I'll just add a quick anecdote because I had a parent say, "For the first time, my son feels like he has a voice in the classroom, a black male. My son has a voice in the classroom, and he knows clearly what his role is, and he's respected for it." So, that was an example.
That's awesome.
So, I want to brag on Dr. Campbell because this came to his attention the year before last, and he thought, hmm, this seems to be congruent with, with our philosophy and what we're about. So, he makes the decision to send a cadre of teachers in the summer to get training in it. He'll tell you it was blind luck, and maybe it was, but it was brilliant blind luck because, because they came back completely enthused and, and committed to this, and, and they've talked to so many colleagues that, that he has actually found a way to, to bring the training here instead of, because we didn't have a, a big enough cadre to bring it here at that time, but it is expensive, you know, to have people go off. So, he's already figured out, how do we make it available to more teachers because it is, again, so congruent with our philosophy? But you've been a little humble about it and say, well, you know, I just took a chance, more or less. But, believe me, it, it, it was an educated chance, to say the least. Good job, Dr. Campbell.
Thank you, sir. It was a, it was a, it was very inspiring to hear veteran teachers come back to say, it's changed my life, and it's changed how I see myself as a teacher after I felt that I had done everything I could possibly do and learned what I could possibly learn, to come back so invigorated. And the staff, they've gone to recruit their colleagues to say, you've got to do this because this is what it's done for me in my practice.
Including teachers, many, I don't even know how many, but it, it, it's more than, more than almost thirty, who engaged in the training last summer, the very first week we got out of school. So, if that tells you anything about the level of commitment that existed when staff were ready to just immediately engage.
For five days.
For five full days.
Yeah, this is a big commitment.
Wow. Well, thank you. You guys are amazing, as you know, we think so. And this is just a great example of the kind of rich and deep work you're doing. And so, I'm thanking both of you, but I'm thanking all the people behind you because I know there's a lot of people involved, but just, this is fabulous. Thank you so much.
My first question is a math question. Can you go to the, the page on the numbers of students seeking mental health services? There was a, this is maybe a hopeful question. I think the total number of students seeking mental health assistance or services was fifty-five percent? And, yeah, there you go, it's in the third box, fifty-five percent reported seeking, seeing a mental health professional. So, I'm wondering if you got to the fifty-five by adding the seventeen and the thirty-eight that appear in the bullets below? So, my question is, I, you know, because fifty-five percent of our students seeking mental, seeing a mental health professional is a lot, in, in my opinion. And, but then when I looked at the two numbers below, I wondered if it's really the case that we had seventeen percent of our students only seeing the ETH, ETHS mental health professional and a different thirty-eight percent seeing mental health professionals outside of ETHS, when in fact, there could be overlap between the two and we would get to a slightly lesser percentage than fifty-five percent? Is that a, do we know?
We did a lot of cross-tabulation, and what we looked at was, what is the extent to which there is overlap? We didn't report on the overlap, but we also reported on specifically students who are naming. I am seeing, looking at specifically an ETHS mental health staff professional, and then looking at who is seeking out. We can definitely look at bringing forward in the future, where does overlay exist? Because we know that also exists.
Yeah, it would seem to me that there, there have to be a number of our students who saw an ETHS mental health professional, perhaps as a starting point, and then also saw a mental health professional outside of ETHS. And, and in which case, we'd be sort of double-counting that to get to the fifty-five percent. Maybe I'm just trying to make a glass half-full kind of, you know, perspective on this, that's all.
Thank you.
That was, that was just my easy question. So, I had another question about the GPA measures as, as built into this sort of complex equation that we do around wellness. And in previous years, we've reported out in a more specific and broken-out fashion on GPAs of various subgroups of students. And I'm wondering why we take a different approach this year? And it, again, it's these year-to-year comparisons that I'm always asking about, have we achieved growth this year? And it's hard to tell from your report.
Yeah. So, one of the things that we were really looking at was, we had begun, as we have constantly been analyzing, how do we make it relevant for GPA to the outcome measure of well-being? We had broken it down from the perspective of semester to semester, for example, right? And we wanted that to be relevant as well, semester to semester. When we were beginning, as, as you all know, this is really year three of us bringing the data to make sure to move forward with. So, we were really committed to, let's look at that differently. Is that really a reflection of the growth? Which is why we landed with the constant focus on both every chat, every student succeeds as well as thinking about our school goal of where is the growth within the mean for our GPA and looking specifically at GPA? And that's why we began to focus on looking at growth within the cohort of class of 2019. What we are committed to, and we were just having a conversation about this, and is continuing to look at, what is going to be our true measure of GPA in relation to well-being? And that's an analysis that we are going to be taking on actively as we commit to a more relevant picture of both well-being and GPA. So, we actually have several meetings already scheduled to hash through what is going to be that most accurate analysis. So, we're committed to finding that.
Well, I think, I, I think it's really complicated, but also extraordinarily important. And I, you know, I think we need to figure out, we get separate, you know, so-called achievement reports. we get separate, you know, so-called achievement reports, and then we get separate so-called well-being reports. But as you've nicely articulated at lots of different points during tonight's presentation, the two are completely entangled. And, but we need to, as a board, sitting where we sit, not in your shoes, on the ground, we need to be able to have a way at a high level to know whether what you're doing is the right course. Whether we need to stay that course, whether we need to do course correction, because we're not seeing the change that we want to see, or the improvement that we want to see. So I guess I would just say, I hope that you could make progress.
We're committed to this thing.
And figure this out, and help us understand how that, to the best of your ability, how it compares to where we've been previously, by any measure. Some measure that we can use to look from year to year and see what the trend is. You know, again, at the highest level where we sit, we need to see those, the trend lines.
And we, yeah, I hear you, and we agree 100%.
And we need to see, and we need to see it. I just want to emphasize again, subgroups, you know, our blackmail students, our students with IEPs. I mean, we really, and I know that's a smaller group, and so trends are tricky. But our students with IEPs are not, they're struggling in this report. And we need to hear more about what we're doing there.
We agree. Thank you.
Oh, and thank you, by the way, also, for that whole extracurricular. I wanted to get into thanks, for the extracurricular, your idea about how to, because I've been, as you know, harping on that, so that from, again, from year to year, we can sort of get a grip on how we're looking at how that impacts our students' success.
Liz, yes?
Looking at the numbers for the referrals for anxiety and depression, and sort of an increase in referrals to social work time, do you have any sense if it's an actual increase in depression and anxiety? Or is it an increase in students seeking help? Do have the social workers given you any feedback on that? If it's, I mean, because I would want to know if it's an actual increase in mental health issues? So, yes, all of the above. What we're seeing is actually fairly reflective of what's continuing to happen. And I know we've talked about this previously, from a nationwide trend perspective. So one of the things that is true is that, and in fact, Kathy Mills asked the question before we got started of, wow, look at this big jump in the social work referrals that had occurred. And one of the reasons for that is both need, but it's also about putting in the right infrastructure and programming and referral processes in our systems. So part of these components definitely have to do with our level of awareness of all of us owning, right, student well-being. And really, we talk about this a lot, but not just social work referrals, but we really have been messaging consult, consult, consult. And our staff really are, whether that's teacher to teacher, or teacher to social worker. I get reached out a lot. I know you do too. And we want that. We want folks not to feel isolated. Because the other part of the answer, so yes, part of it is because of an increase in the capacity and the infrastructure being established, and our messaging. And part of it is because student need is increasing. And we're seeing that. The complexity and the intensity of the need is absolutely increasing. And all of our local schools, our Chicago community schools, as well as nationwide, are seeing the same thing. And we are all working frantically, frankly, to continue to figure out, how do we make sure to address this from direct service provision? But also not practice what we call a private-practice mentality within a school, but rather thinking about direct service provision and how are we all doing this together?
And Taya, your answer was just beautiful. And Ms. Olavitz, I loved your question, because, you know, what are we really seeing here? And I like your, all the above. But I think it's really worth noting that students today are much more open about their needs, much more willing to acknowledge depression and mental health issues. You know, there was a time where many, many people, adults as well as young people, felt you just keep it inside, you know, you don't express it, you don't tell anybody. Or you don't know where to go for help. And so I thought your answer was beautiful. But I all, but I just add, I think we are very fortunate that we now live in a time where adults and young people are really willing to acknowledge, I need some more help. And I have an idea about where I go for more help. And ultimately, I think that's going to result in better mental health in our society and in young people, because of that openness, that awareness, and that willingness to bring it forward.
Thank you.
So this was by far an incredible report, and lots of information. I know that we're, we'll continue to talk about these trends. As I heard you speaking about blackmails and IEP students, I, you know, what my thoughts are always the crossover, that we're talking many times about the same students who are in both of those categories, which just makes it even more complicated. But I really do appreciate the approach to making this, like you said, not a private-practice mentality, that everybody, as we often do here, everybody's on board. Everybody's a resource, the adults, resource for the students, and resource to each other. So, and that's what will make this work. Because it is complicated. And we know our society is even more complicated every day. We see so many indications of that around us nationwide and in our local community. So thank you for bringing this to us so well-formed. And I think we just all are just deeply appreciative. Thank you.
And now they're going to simply load another slide deck. And the same duo is going to do the next presentation on the alternative school.
This one will be a little quicker.
Yes, I noticed that there was nobody else here to do that.
Yeah, right.
I wondered.
Now, this report's longer than the one that they just gave, so.
Only by about 20 minutes.
I'm kidding.
So, not really.
Everybody, everybody seemed.
She really is kidding. I was laughing when I said 20 minutes longer. We will be brief in this report. This is our alternative school, our alt-school, affectionately known as, for last school year. And I am going to be channeling my inner Don DeLeo White. So Dr. White is our Director of Student Support Services. And so she is part of our Student Services Department. So she has a couple different hats. Can't be here tonight, because one of her hats is being a mom, and she has children who weren't well. And if we don't take care of our own children and ourselves, we can't take care of others. So she's home doing the right thing, taking care of her child, that who wasn't well. Don DeLeo White is the Director of the Alt School, also is a 504 Coordinator, and all of these folks within the family, the large family of Student Services. She also supports our pre-imposed hospitalization program, our in-school credit recovery, and our homebound tutoring. So this is just one of her hats. And it's going to be our pleasure to kind of walk through this with you a little bit. One of the things that we talk about is the fact that our alt-school has really found the ability to blend academic, social-emotional learning, addressing attendance problems, and doing that in a way that addresses kind of, there isn't a one-size-fits-all mentality. We address such a variety of student concerns, whether that's around truancy, whether that is around a lack of credit accumulation, or a lack of a sense of belonging. And we're going to talk about that in a little bit. We have a referral process that has been well-established within our grade-level teams, working with students and their families around how to complete referrals, and engaging in a contract of what it means to be part of the alt-school. Because ultimately, going to alt-school is not intended to be a placement. Going to alt-school is an intervention to help students reengage in our school environment with the ultimate plan of thinking about post-high school planning, but before graduation and post-high school, is thinking about reintegrating into the rest of our school community. And so oftentimes, we have students who reintegrate completely, or who take a couple of classes once they've established regular semesters within the alt-school and experiencing success and a renewed sense of belonging. Our alt-school logistics, for those of you who may not know, is that we have a morning and an afternoon session, as well as evening school. Our evening school is from 4:00 to 7:00 on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We have a hybrid. Our alt-school, often folks think of alt-school as simply online classes. It is not simply online classes. So teachers instruct both in the morning and the afternoon. And that includes, excuse me, US history. In the past, we've looked at US history, we've looked at math, chemistry. I got to observe chemistry class going on in the alt-school. That means getting very creative when you don't have a typical lab environment. But watching students and our teachers engage in a direct instruction environment, as well as providing support to students who are in the online credit recovery component, really is an example of how staff can do many things at once. Instruct, check in with other students who are doing their online credit recovery, and other students who are doing different levels of interventions. The other piece that is important to us for note when we think about social-emotional learning is that our life skills class is taught within that environment, and that's through our peer services partnership, our substance, local substance use agency, with regard to not just substance use, but lifelong decision-making skills. So a little bit about our APEX digital learning curriculum. It's truly a wide range of credits. And it offers everything from an advanced placement curriculum and preparedness, really assessing students where their learning levels are at. So you might be taking it at the AP level, and you might be taking it in consideration of whatever learning needs that a student may demonstrate in that level, to both challenge, but also keep them engaged. And as we're thinking about that, one of the things that's important to our APEX is the, is kind of going back to, we often talk about the real world. But the real world needs to be about relevance to the students. And one of the things that I think the alt-school works really hard at, beyond creating a sense of family and belonging, is making things relevant to each of the students, and each student having a different experience. So here are some examples of our current, just a variety of our APEX course offerings. Everything from English, social studies, math, science electives, and meeting all of our graduation requirements. When we're looking at our total graduates, as we had shared with you, we are excited that, right now, 37 of the 46 students enrolled in the program are working very hard to meet the May 15 deadline to participate in the graduation of May 24, 2020. So we have a lot of students with an eye on the prize. If all these students complete their courses, we will have a total of 54 students, including 17 students in our evening school program. And our evening school program is exclusively in the evening, allowing students, particularly students who we reengage, and many of you know this, we reengage students, whether that's for their fifth year or sixth year of high school, or they've, sometimes they've left ETHS altogether and thought they were going to another high school, did not graduate and come back. And sometimes students think, we don't want to continue. And we reach out and say, no, we want you to continue, and they come back. So what we're looking at is meaningful instruction, both direct instruction as well as online. The students can earn up to 16 credits per school year to look at, really, how do we make up for that credit deficiency that can occur? It's really self-directed with that opportunity for constant coaching. And we're going to have some student voice in a second to talk about, while there's self-directed learning, there's a classroom community that really encourages each other to where each student has arrived at and moving forward. Exit criteria, I spoke to the fact that, really, the goal is for students to move out of alt-school. And that it's really used as an intervention. Yet what we know happens, and I used this example a few years ago, what we know happens is that many students feel so connected that they feel like this is, this is truly a sense of family that they hadn't experienced previously in this school. We have so many fabulous ways that teachers and staff outside of alt-school create a sense of belonging, but it doesn't work for all students. And within alt-school, we find that students who previously didn't have a sense of belonging, but wanted one, they're finding it here. And so in order to find that sense of belonging and then feel confident enough to move out, we really want to see two semesters of improved attendance and engagement, behavioral management with regard to disciplinary issues, and looking at earning a minimum of credit accrual moving forward. We're also excited, when we're thinking about post-high school planning, we have been working a lot around completing college applications. Our College and Career Services has worked actively around both supporting the college process, as well as options in terms of going directly into the world of work. Many of our students in alt-school are currently working. And how many students have said, I want my eye on this job right now and this job later. All of which we support, and encouraging them to always think about, what is their career trajectory, and what else will take them there? So, excuse me, one of the things that we've been working with is our Youth Job Center collaboration. So Tana Francelno is our new representative, reporting to many different groups, including ETHS, regarding job placement, apprenticeship programs, job skills. And we recently just secured to the foundation scholarships specific to helping students in the alt-school move ahead, even if they're graduating late at semester. We have our traditional ETHS scholarships. And now we have this opportunity for students who are graduating at semester to be supported through alt-school and scholarships as well. So this is my favorite part, the student feedback. As part of the exit checkout for the program, whether students are graduating, or they're moving back to taking classes throughout the entire school, we ask how they rated the school, what was positive or negative about their impact from an educational perspective, how satisfied they were. So we ask all these questions. So here are some of the responses. To the question, "How did the alt-school positively or negatively impact your educational experience?" "It helped me get through the final credits I needed, where I was worn out with the school and ready to move on." Another student stated, "It positively impacted my education by giving me another way to graduate and learn new things as well." Another student, who many of us knew after spending many years at ETHS, came to the alt-school and said, simply, "You get more help at the alt-school." Another student noted, "Alt-school gave me more freedom in choosing the subjects I wanted to work on and when. I went to a Montessori school when I was younger, and they focused on letting students choose what to work on. So being able to help have that helped me control and achieve my goals." Suggestions, of course, are always welcome from the students. I hear Dr. Campbell chuckling to my left right now, because one of the suggestions is always, better food, right? Not all of our students. Not all of our students um enjoy going to the cafeteria, I should qualify this, so that some students do enjoy simply being able to stay in the space because they feel comfortable within that family space. Um, so that means the PB and J um is is afforded to them. So it's not that our nutrition services is making the peanut butter and jelly. But, one of the um recommendations is that the, and notations, is that the staff is great and that they want to continue to help other students find a way when they're struggling with attendance. In terms of year of the black male, um, one of the things that um the staff did was specifically look at restorative justice model to be accountable for actions, looking at um an opportunity to address community service and offering students with extreme deficiency in credit a chance to attend the evening program, but also looking at the restorative justice component of who wants to make sure not only are they engaging in restorative justice for owning harm and or acts that of of um what would be considered wrongdoing from a restorative justice perspective and thinking about how to make it right. And that focus was on community service, specifically looking at how to work detentions um and earn that community service in a meaningful way that ultimately led to both their sense of empowerment and being able to attend prom. So, that concludes our presentation. We can make it longer if you like, but I think you're probably done. Um, questions?
Thank you, thank you. Questions from the board?
I think the one thing that I'll reiterate is, most likely, uh, none of these students would have graduated from ETHS. That may be a little exaggeration because if it's not available, maybe you do find another pathway, but overwhelmingly, these are students who probably would have exhausted their options and uh, uh, you know, maybe in the future, uh, you know, GRE or something, but but now, they're in school, uh, you can hear from some of those quotes, and and we get this really from all of these students, uh, they do feel like they have found a place where they belong. And most importantly, uh, they're persisting, uh, they're they're learning other um um executive functioning skills to manage their time, to show up, uh, to complete the work. And uh, uh, here we're seeing, you know, what, thirty-seven uh students this year alone. Um, and and you've seen in recent years, I mean, you know, it's a number of students each year now who, because of this opportunity, are getting their education and uh doing their post-secondary planning.
Hundred and sixty so far.
Pretty cool things.
Wonderful.
So it's a, it's a fun report to give, and uh, um, I can't tell you how gratifying it is for all of us and I'm sure for all of you board members that we now have a morning, an afternoon, and an evening alternative school, uh, to just say to more students, you belong here.
Yes, and you reach out to them. To give them that message. Yeah, that's, yeah, that's great.
And they recruit their peers.
Yeah. Jude has a question.
So, like, what is the protocol? How how um long after students stop out do we start trying to reengage them? And who does that?
So, we actually um begin to engage students even before they are thinking about leaving ETHS. Um, and so long before students get to that point, we begin the conversation about what are the ways to stay engaged. Um, one of the points that we see, though, to answer your question, is around graduation and that sense of, I should have graduated at X time. So the counselors and the whole grade level team begins reaching out to the students to make plans for a seamless transition right away when we know that that might not be in sight, but we're not going to give up and we're going to keep going. Um, students who do not then begin, continue to with us for the summer for alt school, we begin reaching out in the summer immediately, and then again in the fall and throughout the school year.
And depending on where we have that conversation, students go to the alt school and a lot of them do reintegrate back into um
Oh, yeah.
ETHS for a more traditional setup.
Yeah, there are a lot of models out there, I'm sure you know, and not that alt schools are that common, but schools that that have them. Some of them have a model that, you know, once you go to an alt school, you don't re-enter or reintegrate
Yeah.
Into the school, and I think that's a very important part of our philosophy. Um, certainly, a large number don't, but 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 for those who are seeking, you know, that, or or after a while in the alt school and they have, you know, achieved more credits, they, you know, I'd really, I'd rather reintegrate, and so uh, I think it's a real important feature of our alternative school.
Well, I just want to say, that's what I'm most excited about because I recall when I first started on the board, you were working towards that, that there were students that um had truancy issues. So now you have, you have a truancy officer. I don't know how, how old that position is or how new that position is, but um nonetheless, students that were not stuck in just finishing at alt school, that they did transition because they received the support that they needed in order to be successful into mainstream and um and were able to do that successfully. So, that is, that's, to me, that's, you know, some can't, but for those that can, that is a wonderful experience. They leave here feeling like they, you know, for a moment they were stuck in this space, but now they were able to leave ETHS feeling like a full student.
We're equally excited about that
Yeah.
As well as the post-high schooling uh planning component that we are continuously um committed to as well.
Yeah.
So we agree. Thank you.
They have a plan.
Remember.
Yes. All right, thank you both. Got another report?
There's an audit here.
Yeah, we'll call them back, they can do the audit presentation.
What was the opening ad?
All right, let's move on. Uh, we're at our first reading
Yes.
Press policy issue, uh, number one oh two
Yes.
In your packets.
Uh, yeah, the Policy Committee met uh on December second to review the most recent policy update from the IASB Service, Press Policy One Oh Two. This is a first reading. I did want to answer one question that came up during the uh committee meeting. The committee asked me to look into uh Policy Five Two Zero Workplace Harassment Prohibited to ensure that the language that we uh passed last year uh in January of twenty nineteen was in fact included in the current policy. That revision is included. Uh, essentially what we did was we redacted a, about a paragraph's worth of language uh to broaden the scope of that uh policy, and that is in fact reflected in the current draft.
Thank you. It's a lot, it was
It was a long one.
It's a big one, yeah. This is a long one. Uh, yeah, so take your time and go through that. Okay, comments from the public, Dr. Beavis?
Uh, yes, we have uh two comments from the public, and I'm just going to introduce the comments, uh, and then I'll introduce each uh speaker. Uh, speakers who've signed up for public comment will be invited in the order that they've signed up to address the board for up to three minutes. I will keep time and signal to you at the end of two minutes as a courtesy, uh, and I will keep uh time and let you know at the end when the three-minute mark is met, uh, and uh should that become necessary. Speakers are asked to come forward and speak lectern, please state your name and address. Public comments generally pertain to school district matters, but comments about any individuals are expressly prohibited. Please understand that the school board does not respond to public comment, but will listen carefully and will follow up as the board deems appropriate. I just have to get my phone out here, hold on one second. Okay, so the first uh speaker is uh Noam Haysek-Lawey.
Hi, my name is Noam and I'm a junior, and I'm here today to talk about the importance of land acknowledgement. I'm so sorry.
You're fine. We haven't started any timer, don't worry about it, you're good. I'll, we'll stop the clock.
Great, thank you. Um, okay, so today we are here on stolen land. The United States is made up of pieces of butchered land assembled by genocide of indigenous folks. The first white people came to what we now called Evanston in eighteen thirty-six. Evanston was named after, I'm so sorry, one more second.
I'm impressed with all the technology.
I know, two phones. I'm just scared one's going to die. Um, Evanston was named after the town's founder, John Evans. John Evans founded Northwestern University, and he also orchestrated one of the worst mass murders of indigenous people, the Sand Creek massacre. Our high school is named after a man that committed genocide. Therefore, the name ETHS is inherently violent. At this point in time, it is unrealistic to ask for renaming of our town. However, it's not too late to formally acknowledge that the land our school is on was taken from the Ojibwe, Odawa, and Padua Tomi and many other native tribes. An acknowledgement is a first step in honoring these tribes and also recognizing the systems of oppression that threaten indigenous people's existence. A land acknowledgement, potentially in the form of a plaque, would again only be one step. From there, ETHS should consider mandatory curriculum, Native American Heritage Month, and better representation in pieces of texts. I'm currently talking with the head of Native American Studies at Northwestern and working with indigenous folks at ETHS. We all, we are all ready and eager to work with you to help to create this land acknowledgement. A brass plaque costs around eighty dollars, and if there is no room in the budget for one, we all would be happy to raise that money. I hope this is only the beginning of the process ETHS must take to make amends with Evanston's history. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Bella Hubbard.
All right. Hello, ETHS Board. I am Bella Hubbard, and I'm here today on behalf of E-Town Sunrise, which was formerly E-Town Climate Action. We were here at the last meeting, hopefully you remember us. Just a second. Okay. We are here today to make sure that you feel the same amount of urgency around the crime, climate crisis as we do. The climate crisis is easy to dismiss as a hippie issue, a vegan issue, and a white people issue. Environmentalists have dampened their reputation and strayed this movement by taking, talking about the polar bears or ecosystems, but the core of the fight of environmentalism is about justice. This crisis has clearly been caused by white greed. Colonialism, imperialism, capitalism, consumerism have caused our resources to become depleted and our atmosphere to suffocate with CO2. Yet the people who bear the brunt of the climate crisis are poor people of color. Looking at droughts in Honduras, the hurricanes in Puerto Rico and the Bahamas, air pollution in India, or those affected by Hurricane Katrina, you will see poor people of color. Last year, sixty percent of all refugees were climate refugees. Indigenous people are dying and having their homes ripped away from them for our own profit, comfort, and convenience. Cook County was ranked ninth in the nation among the worst communities in the US for air pollution near public schools, a huge majority of which are in poor black and brown communities. So this is also our issue. As our oceans rise and our forests burn, the most oppressed are the first to die. This is predicted to worsen, and in eleven years, scientists say that the damage will be irreversible and out of human control. It is an enormous privilege to be able to ignore this crisis. As a white woman in the top one percent of the world, which is anyone making over thirty thousand dollars a year, I truly have one of the highest positions of privilege and responsibility to change this. As someone who will likely not be affected by this cl- climate crisis, it is my responsibility to fight for those who will. I need this school to do the same. I need this school to prioritize this crisis. We are extremely grateful to see that ETHS is stepping up after students have called for action, but we need to see more. We need a full-time sustainability coordinator.
Thirty seconds.
We need a concrete plan to achieve sustainability in every aspect of this institution, from eliminating plastic cups to a hundred percent renewable energy. All students must be educated on the enormous gravity of this issue. I encourage that everyone in this room do their research, research on this existential injustice. I've offered to give you all a climate reality presentation, and I encourage you to take me up on this offer. I know there's a meeting in February in which sustainability within the school is reported, and I would love to present. Let's shift the culture within this school.
Finish the sentence, you did it.
Let's all step up, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, there is no further comment this evening.
Thank you. All right, next item is FOIA. I didn't see any FOIAs in the packet.
There is no FOIA this evening.
All right, so um, we have a few uh board committee reports. Um, the first one that's listed, I guess, is mine. Um, so I attended the Illinois Association of School Boards' um annual conference two weeks ago, and um I'm just, I sent this to the board, it was a press release, that the delegate assembly, which I was a part of, um, voted um against allowing uh teachers or giving teachers the opportunity to um have firearms or guns in schools. So, um, there was a resolution that called for um the School Board Association to allow this, and um after hearing some comments, um, the vote was passed. Um, and the the vote tally is is in the document that I sent you, and um if anyone is interested, there's a contact person. Um, maybe what we'll do is make this a part of um the board documents so that folks can access it if they need to, so that would be fine. I'll give this to you, Lisa. And then um, the other piece of information just for the board is that we did participate in a school board self-evaluation, and I sent that to the school board as well, so um you can take a look at that if you have questions about some of the follow-up or next steps, we can talk about that. And I wanted you to give a chance to think about it, so we can do that later. All right, and are there other reports that was?
I just have a really quick, um, the December, I guess, EdRed meeting was on Friday, and um the big piece that we want to be paying attention to, and I know people are, um, is that the um Property Tax Relief Task Force Report is due at the end of this year on the thirty-first, um, and, you know, they're pretty clear that there's going to be something introduced in January around um property tax relief. So, it could be a temporary, it could be permanent, it, we don't know exactly what it's going to be, obviously EdRed's following it, but it's something up, we have to follow as well.
Thank you. Um, there was a city, uh, school city?
Um, yeah, I attended the uh City School Committee meeting on uh November nineteenth with District Sixty-Five and um members of the the City Council and the mayor. Um, and uh, I think all the minutes should be uploaded to their website, but uh some of the things we talked about were, um, the mayor's employment advisory committee presented, talking about the different opportunities they're doing to link um our high school students to um employers in the area. Chief Cook from the police department was there, and we talked about uh school resource officers and some of the changing roles of moving more towards um school safety in the event of really dramatic, um, i- in the, in the event of like, school safety of of having the police come in during um a violent event, um, as opposed to more, more being in the building and building relationships with students. And um, we also talked about, we had a sustainability program update, and there were several people from the community, and we had one ETHS student there um talking about the sustainability efforts at the city level, and they were encouraging District Sixty-Five and Two Oh Two to sort of adopt some of the work that they're doing as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other committee reports? And I know we're going to talk about the Audit Committee in a little bit. So, um, all right, we'll move on with the Student Board Report echo. Echo.
So, a lot actually has happened in November. I'll start with the Distinguished Alumni Event, which all seniors went to, where I think around five or six alumni of ETHS came and spoke to the senior class. Some major takeaways that students were talking about after the day was one of the alumni said that all the seniors are going to be alumni in six months, and I think that really resonated with students that we'll be leaving this space and functioning as alumni rather than students, and what that means for post-secondary and thinking about what comes next. And it was also impactful for students that there were students actually introducing those alumni, and so that was a great part of the day. Another thing that happened was the SOAR Conference, which I went to. And the purpose of the SOAR Conference is to have two full days of meaningful courageous conversations about race with students from all different walks of life, in order to better understand the oppressive systems we're all navigating and working towards disrupting those systems. And some major takeaways that I personally had was thinking about finding a way to gain an understanding of whiteness and of race without exploiting people of color to gain that understanding. And then, also how I can apply that to the work that I do here on this board, or the work that I do outside in the community and in the school, and furthering that as I leave ETHS as well. And then, the next thing is the Witherspoon Forum, which is run by Student Union annually for the past four years now. And the Witherspoon Forum is a space in the hub where students are able to come all periods of the day and meet with various administrators, like Dr. Campbell and Dr. Witherspoon, as well as Mr. Brown, Ms. Kinsey, I believe, Mr. Robinson, and some other administrators also came. And it's just a space also for students to have the ability to talk about different experiences at ETHS. Some table topics were race, sexual assault and harassment, classroom experience, the environment, LGBTQ plus identities, discipline, and so forth. And a lot of really productive conversations came out of that day. I think around eighty students per period were in that space, which is really amazing. And we had a lot of great feedback to also take back to next year. And hopefully, we'll be compiling a report, maybe for the board, but also just for Student Union to know what to work on as a school improvement group, and also to show to other various groups. Because there was a lot of great feedback and information that came out of that day. Yeah. Thank you.
Echo, what's the name of that?
The Witherspoon Forum. So, it's taking Witherspoon, no, Campbell and Witherspoon and putting them together. Oh, and then, sorry, just last Friday, there was also the Chalk Out, which was where students walked out after eighth period to Fountain Square and the downtown Evanston area and wrote with chalk on sidewalks about environmental issues. So.
And when I walked my grandsons to the tree lighting on Saturday night, I was still reading all the chalk out, all the way downtown into Fountain Square. They, not only here at the high school, but they really covered a lot of territory.
I noticed it too, when I was downtown yesterday, but I didn't know when and how it happened, so thank you for telling me.
ETHS students know how to have voice.
I kind of thought it had something to do with ETHS. All right, Dr. Witherspoon.
Well, mine is really short, because I'll begin with the end and just a couple three reminders. Winter break is coming up at the end of next week, and it's December twenty-first through January the fifth. We'll return on Monday the sixth, or is it the fifth? I don't know. Anyway, whatever that Monday is, we'll be back. And we will have semester exams next week. They go through sixteenth through the eighteenth, and then the nineteenth and twentieth are makeup days and grading days as well. So, the semester is winding down, and I'm so happy to say that, because never before in the history of ETHS, would I have been able to say to you, prior to winter break, the semester is winding down.
That's right.
And we're very, very pleased with this new calendar change, and people are learning to adjust. We know that some teachers have maybe felt a crunch at the very end here, and we want them to, by next year, first semester, learn how to pace it a little differently, so the students aren't feeling such a crunch at this point. So, we're on it. But because of that, just a couple, three things to remind you of. First of all, this week, we'll be putting out information about the Five Essential Survey. This is a statewide, a survey that is developed statewide, but then used in individual school districts. We've used it and reported on it several years in the past, but we'll be putting out a ton of information, starting later this week and all the way after winter break, reminding people about taking that survey. This Wednesday, December eleventh, we're going to have an event called Navigating the Course Request Process. It begins at six-thirty in the auditorium. Parents and students are encouraged to attend, and it usually gets a big turnout, because we are in the throes of course selection. Of course, Echo wouldn't know that, because she doesn't have to pay any attention to it this year. But all the incoming freshmen, as well as all of the other non-seniors are involved in that. Our winter play is being performed this week. It's the Diary of Anne Frank, and it's this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, December twelfth, thirteenth, and fourteenth. Don't miss it. Anybody listening in still at this hour, or maybe in a replay at some point, don't miss it, the Diary of Anne Frank here at ETHS. And finally, a reminder that this coming Sunday, December fifteenth, is our Holiday Music Festival. It starts at three in the afternoon. It involves all of our music department. If you've never been to one, you want to experience this. If you have been to one, you want to experience this. It's just a really important event each year at ETHS, and that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you very much. So, Mary, you're in your element now. This is about your time. Mary and Kendra.
No reflection on Mary.
That's exactly what he said. Yes, that was an ouch. Yes.
I will. In case anyone has not met Kendra, this is Kendra Williams, our Assistant CFO, and she has taken over the wonderful responsibility from me of being in charge of our annual audit. So, this is really her baby.
Nice.
Not her literal baby. She has a baby, but this isn't it. This is as cute. This is quieter, but not as cute. So, we only have eight slides for you tonight. Yay, us. But we'll talk a little bit of narrative around those eight slides. As you know, the Audit Committee did meet on December fourth, which was last week, last Wednesday, I believe. We had about an hour and ten-minute meeting. We talked about the highlights of the financials, some of the other important information that affected the outcome of the financials. Our audit opinion is positive, as it has been in past years. In fact, the auditors did point out, for the benefit of the new committee members, we have two members of the board on the committee, that our audit does win two national awards, actually, from government finance officers and for International Association of School Business Officials. And that's really because we have a thorough, comprehensive, and very transparent audit with a lot of narrative to back it up. So, even though we did have one prior period adjustment, which we'll talk about it a little bit at the end of the slides, that did not sway or change their opinion. The prior period adjustment was for a large capital expense bill that came in last summer. We'll talk about that a little bit. So, we had some moderate increases in revenues and expenses. For the most part, not much, other than what we kind of had planned for. We did have a two-million-dollar planned transfer, which was, if you might recall, from the Working Cash Fund. But the Working Cash Fund is part of what we call the General Fund. That includes, the General Fund is the Education Fund, which is by far our largest fund, also the TORT Fund, which is a really small fund, reserved for legal expenses, and then the Working Cash Fund. So, there was a two-million-dollar planned transfer, which is going to show on financial statements as a deficit at the bottom line. Other revenue and expense categories are consistent with what we've seen in prior years, and there was one deficiency that was noted regarding an account reconciliation. We had lengthy discussions with the auditors. Corrections were made. We, all of those things are noted in what's called their management letter, and it's not unusual to have points for improvement pointed out within a management letter. But as I said, none of the issues were considered egregious, if you will, and none of them swayed their opinion, and we don't expect them to affect our awards for this audit for the coming year.
Okay. So, going over some of the highlights from the audit, as Mary was explaining before, that we had a two-million planned transfer to the Capital Improvements Fund, and so that led to there being a one-point-eight-six-million decrease in the General Fund, which includes the Ed Fund, TORT Fund, and the Working Cash Fund. And the Education Fund ended up having a surplus of a hundred and ninety-three thousand for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen. There was a large, oh, sorry, thank you, there was a large amount of capital spending in fiscal year nineteen. We know that we had Entrance Three, but there has been a large amount of capital spending just, that's been happening for prior years. We've had a lot of wonderfully great projects, but with those great projects come a great price tag at times. And so, Entrance Three would be one that was over three million dollars, and so we ended up spending over four million dollars just in capital projects in fiscal year nineteen. And so, that includes the ChemFis Lab as well, things like when we did the pool roof and other projects that were capitalized in that year. Summer twenty-nineteen projects, we know that we have the locker rooms, the Wellness and Performance Center, also some bigger items that came on for, that will be coming on when we do the audit for FY twenty. Those are going to get capitalized, since they were in progress over the summer. So, as far as long-term debt goes, that was reduced by almost one-point-eight million for FY twenty-nineteen. So, that's for the Debt Service Fund. And so, when it comes to the Debt Service Fund, that has a bit of a cyclical nature to it, because we issue bonds every other year. And so, because of that, we see a greater decrease than, like, if you were to compare it to what we saw last year. And so, next year, once we issue bonds, there will be something to offset that decrease, I guess you could say, since we would have an inflow of cash next year, and which we did last year. So, if you're looking just to compare the two fiscal years, like fiscal year twenty-eighteen and twenty-nineteen, since we have both of those documents, that would be why you would see the bigger difference there. As far as capital needs go, we do have capital needs that are outpacing our available funds, so that's just something that we highlight, just to keep everyone aware that as we continue to care for this building and try to make improvements as much as we can, those are kind of running rampant where our funds may not always be. And so, in being mindful of that, we do make transfers. So, we talked about that two-million transfer that happened in FY nineteen from Working Cash to CIP. Also, in FY eighteen, there was a one-point-three-million transfer from the Operations and Maintenance Fund to Capital Improvement. So, we try to make sure that we're transferring where we can to help with the needs of the capital, capital projects.
Okay. We wanted to talk about some threats, but before I do that, I just wanted to give just an additional kind of small explanation for some of the bottom-line results in some funds. I kind of thought of this after we created the slides, so I'll just, I just want to walk you through a couple of things. There were some funds, other than what we mentioned in the Education Fund, there were a couple of funds that you will see a bottom-line negative overall for the year. But, for example, the Operations and Maintenance Fund, we had a couple really large building maintenance items. Those were not in the capital plan. They were charged to the Operations Fund. The board might remember that we had one that was an emergency purchase. I think that was certainly in the high tens of thousands of dollars. We had a sole-source purchase for some operational items that were not really in the planned capital program, and I think that will happen from year to year. But I think what's important is that the health overall of all of our funds is good. And in fact, we're very conscious about what the fund balance levels should be, as set by the board's fund balance policy. So, for example, even when you look at that General Fund deficit, based on the planned transfer, there's still about a thirty-five percent fund balance in the fund, and what that means is you have about thirty-five percent of what an annual expense would be for that fund, and that's a pretty healthy goal to have. Our policy says it will be between thirty-three and forty percent, and if we get over forty percent, we'll start considering transferring out for things like capital needs that Kendra mentioned. So, just as an example, our Transportation Fund had about a seventy-seven-thousand-dollar deficit for the year. I looked into why that was. Our Athletic Transportation was almost all of that as far as being over budget. We are seeing some rising transportation costs. We're seeing bigger teams. I think our football team is like a no-cut team, and so you're transporting more kids in a lot of cases. Gas prices don't help, certainly, when we're using our own buses. So, but when you think about all those things, the fund itself, like the Transportation Fund, still has a two-hundred percent fund balance. So, that's two years, basically, of expenses kind of in reserve if no money came in, starting tomorrow. So, that's a, that's a fund where we might want to look at maybe transferring out about a million dollars to use towards capital in the future, which is something I have already discussed with our auditors. We want to try to be consistent with our fund balance policy, keep a good amount of reserve, but we also want to be able to transfer out excess things so that it's not an additional burden, for example, on taxpayers. The county will assess taxes for our Debt Service Fund based on what our Debt Service actually is. And so, if we can use some reserves to pay for some of those things rather than debt, that helps everyone really in the long run. Our Debt Service Fund also, I was noticing, had a deficit that wasn't really planned. Again, there's a very healthy fund balance, but like I said, the county property taxes do assess for what our Debt Service payments are. So, that particular issue for Debt Service is something that I want to talk to our auditors and our bond advisor about, just to kind of find out why the property taxes actually are showing lower than what we expected, for example, in the Debt Service Fund. So, anything that wasn't, that was not planned as far as a deficit, we will be continuing to look into, but I just wanted to assure everyone that even with some of those bottom-line negatives for this, just this year, it's not a consistent issue. We will be looking into those items, but the fund balances themselves are very healthy. So, continued threats, we just wanted to mention, our state payments are, some of them are on time, most of them are not. We do get them in, but sometimes they cross fiscal years because of the timing of them. We do accrue what we can, but we can't always accrue them. Property tax freeze, and certainly, property tax appeals are always on the table for us. We hear about them consistently. We know there's a task force at the state level. We also continue to hear about potential pension shifts, and we're always aware, just to remind you, that if there's a pension shift that does come down, the board approved the budget for this year with a transfer planned of up to two million dollars of that excess money, I shouldn't say excess, we never have excess, but additional money that has come in based on the closure of the Washington National TIF. So, for right now, we want to try to put it into capital for important things like tuck pointing, you know, windows, that sort of thing. But if we had to, we can shift some of that money in the future towards pension obligations if they were to come down. So, I think that's all we really wanted to just mention to give you an update. I know you have the full packet in your board packet, the full audit letters and CAFR, but I'm not sure if there are any additional questions or anything that we might need to cover.
I'll just add a couple of things, if I may, Mary. First of all, please understand that a deficit budget is when your expenditures exceed your revenue. This is not a deficit budget, even though some funds may be negative when we do fund transfers and that. We, we outperformed the budget again this year. Our expenditure, revenue exceeded expenditures.
Yes.
So, I think that's a very important thing to know. The other thing is, the Uh, the other thing is, uh, the auditors were very specific, and I'm going to indicate that, uh, Mr. Terich and, uh, Mr. Laude might want to just, uh, speak a second to, to, uh, the overall way that our, our auditor spoke about our budget, but it was important to note that, uh, we have an unmodified, uh, audit letter or audit opinion, and as they emphasized in the meeting, that's the highest that you can get. So we receive the highest opinion, the best opinion that you can get, uh, in an audit by it being unmodified. I don't know if you just want to speak generally about, uh, the way they spoke about our finances or not, but, uh, uh, we did have two board members there, and they were very active in the discussion.
I think, uh, Mary, you, you mentioned the one, there was just one, it wasn't, we didn't get dinged for it, but it was that late expenditure for, uh, was it entrance three?
So, oh, okay. Yeah, so we, we can speak to that and just provide some context around, um, what that was.
That was the prior period adjustment.
Yeah, that was the prior period adjustment that we mentioned in the slide. And so what ended up happening is that, uh, typically our audits happen in September, and last year we requested, because I was going to be on leave, that the audit happened in August. And so they came out early August, a full month before they usually do. Now typically, the industry cutoff and our cutoff is for invoices are allowed to be paid until the end of August. We give 60 days, um, for any invoices for a fiscal year to get in, so that would put us at the end of August, right? June 30th is our fiscal year cutoff. Then we give, uh, until the end of August for any invoices that need to get paid, and then the auditors come in September, and we get rolling and everything is okay. Well, the auditors came a month early, and we neglected to hand over an invoice that was paid after they started their field work. And so because it was related to entrance three, which was a humongous project, it was a humongous invoice, and it wasn't, um, intentional. We, we booked it to the proper fiscal year, which they noted, so they knew that we weren't trying to, like, do anything crazy. We booked it to the proper fiscal year. They just needed to have the record of it, and so when they came back, um, for this audit, it all came out of the wash, and, um, the way to best deal with it because of the amount of the invoice, the, the invoice, uh, $720,000, and so would, there was no other way to deal with it other than to do a prior period adjustment.
That was the only thing I heard.
You mean the only bad thing you heard.
And they said it wasn't bad.
Yeah, I, I mean, it wasn't, there was no intent. It was, we changed our own process, and so there were some repercussions to that that just, of course, in hindsight were obvious. Um, so I, I, I think that they were, um, that they really pointed out that it, it was, I guess, a, a misclassification, if you will, but it wasn't, like Kendra said, it, it wasn't that we were trying to put it in the wrong year, it just occurred after they did their field work.
No, you put it in the right year.
Yeah, we put it right. We put it in the right year.
But, but the auditors, if they don't know that, have to, have to do accounting to, to make the years match.
And as we shared with the audit committee last Wednesday, it was, um, a learning point, and so even moving forward, so like this year, before they were out the door, their last day here, I was like, here's an updated trial balance, here are updated, uh, disbursements, like every, like they got everything over that they got in the beginning at the end, because they have a system where they can match it all up, and it'll kick out if there's like a big difference of any sort. So if that were to happen even erroneously somehow, it would get caught now, because now we've changed our process to make sure that this doesn't happen in the future.
I, I think the only thing that I would add is, is just how impressed and enlightened I came away from that meeting. Um, you know, the audit committee doesn't sound like a great committee at first blush, but both Jude and I, I think I can speak for Jude, we were kind of marveling afterwards at just how much we learned and how truly great my appreciation is for what you do and the level of responsibility, the thoroughness, the detail, and the kind of system of checks and balances that you're con- as you said, a learning point, and that's kind of built into the system and the, and the, you know, having these auditors coming in on this regular basis and, and really tracking and learning from year to year, um, how, how to maintain and be responsible fiscal stewards. It's, it was really quite impressive and exciting, really, at the end of it.
At 8:00 in the morning, who would have thought?
I said I had preconceived notions that changed over the course of that meeting, and just being involved and being able to get that kind of insight, um, into how managing the finances for such a big organization as this is, um, and, and the level of care and detail and attention that you both give to it, um, was, was really astounding and nice to, nice to see. So thank you.
I think you said it connected some dots for you.
Yeah, it really did.
I was really glad about that. And we have a great staff. They're very responsive to the auditors. I mean, I think we prepare even before they get here, and it's, you know, September's not very fun for our office, and, um, that's tough when the school year's starting, but, um, it all comes out for a great purpose in the end, and we feel like we're really thorough and transparent for the readers and citizens, even if it's boring.
But you don't make it boring.
No.
And you both do such a good job explaining. You both do such a good job explaining.
Yeah.
And thank you for that context. I mean, really, it makes, it makes it so clear.
And I just wanted to chime in, that we tease you for your long, long packets, but, you know, there's so many school districts across the country
Right.
would literally just do anything to have this kind of, not only financial stability, but the oversight and the detail and the work you do. I mean, you had a baby, like, things happen, right? And you've already figured out how to build in a system that accounts for that. So I think, you know, we are really, really lucky to have both of you and your team, and, um, and grateful because we don't have to worry. In a lot of districts, this is the only thing they think about, because that, they can't think about great supports for students and equity even, because they don't have any money, and, and they don't have a good system for managing. So we're very grateful that you do all this work so we can do all the other great work. So thank you.
And I will tell you, in years when the, the results are slim, let's say, that generates, um, conversations among all of us, and we really face some harsh realities sometimes. Some years are better than others, but as Eric said, I, I'm thankful that you corrected me on that. The revenues were a good amount above budget, and that's a great thing to have, but then sometimes there are years where some of the expenses match that excess, and so overall the picture's not bad, it's just a good reminder that we need to be careful.
In the last 14 years. In the last 14 years, our expenses have never exceeded revenues, but, uh, but believe me, there are a lot of, lots of, even very financially healthy school districts with big reserves that can't say that, and, and so we are just very careful that we keep, we, we, we keep it balanced and, and we keep those reserves where they need to be. And you may remember, a few years ago, our reserves were so healthy, we moved $5 million out of the reserves, what, maybe four years ago? This isn't that long ago. How long ago was that, Mary?
Yeah, four to five, I'd say, from the operations fund.
We moved $5 million into capital improvements, which is one of the reasons you see all of this here, because we, 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 we didn't want to just be hoarding money. We, 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 you know, had built it up, and then we put it to use for kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're in our action items. The first item is adoption of the 2019 tax levy. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Vought.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Next item is acceptance of fiscal year 19 audit report.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Next item is approval of contract to update and rewire the district PA system.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Next item is 2019-20 calendar adjustment.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item is the consent agenda, which consists of approval of minutes from November 12th, 2019 closed session meeting, November 12th, 2019 regular meeting, November 14th, special meeting, November 16th, closed session meeting, and November 16th, special meeting. Also, the treasurer's report from October 2019, approval of bills, personnel agenda, which consists of appointment to staff, nutrition services, change in status, transfer, leave of absence, certify and support staff, retirement of nutrition services, and abort addendum to the personnel agenda, um, appointment to staff, engineer, and leave of absence maternity.
So moved.
Second.
Well, before we vote, I just, one tiny, tiny little correction. Um, on the minutes for our board retreat, which was the special meeting on either the 14th or 16th, I can't remember which one it is, Jude wasn't there for the roll call and the attendance, and he's reflected as a yes. And since he wasn't there, he, he arrived a little later. We just need to make that adjustment. Sorry, Jude.
Okay, that's for, um...
7th, 16th.
That's the 16th, yes.
Yeah, just change the, it was only six votes.
Yep.
For the closed session. Sorry.
Okay, you'll make that adjustment. Okay, thank you, Marsha.
With that adjustment.
With that adjustment, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. All right. Um, anybody want to bring up any old or new business? Hearing none. Can we have a, a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, we are adjourned.